Citizens of Lewisburg, and welcome to our March 2025 Town Council Meeting. And we'll now begin with our roll call by the clerk.
Mayor Deal.
Here.
Councilwoman Stover.
Here.
Councilwoman Woods.
Here.
Councilwoman Stein.
Here.
Councilwoman Wright.
Here.
Councilwoman Baker.
Here.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Here.
Ms. Wright, could you give us our invocation, please?
Stand if you are able. Most holy ever actually turn of God out Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for letting us come out once again to be about the town's business. Thank you for those that have come out this evening, Lord. Let them be blessed and understand what's going on, that they return to help us out in each need. Thank you, Lord, for everyone that's here and those that are on their way. Thank you for everything you're doing in the town of Lewisburg and what you have yet to do for us. Let us all come together on one accord. These are the best and I ask in your most precious and holy name, amen.
And tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we have guests that will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. We have our local Girl Scout troop, and I'd like to ask them to come forward and lead the citizens in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. And we'll face the flag. Our flag is here, okay? Whenever you're ready. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. Thank you, thank you, thank you, young lady. Thank you. Okay, item number three, four, the adoption of tonight's agenda. Can I get a motion, second, for tonight's agenda? It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the agenda for this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number five, the approval of the minutes. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting February 11, 2025, and the special call meeting for the closed sessions for personnel. No corrections or anything. Could I get a motion to approve those minutes?
May I make a motion to approve the minutes for February 11 and all the closed sessions for the personnel?
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes for our regular meeting for February 11, 2025, and our special call meeting for the closed sessions for personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item number six is the appointment of our fire chief. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we had been searching for a fire chief for our local fire department, and we now have found one and hired that person. He has agreed to come aboard to serve you as well as the town of Lewisburg as our fire chief. And I'd like to introduce him tonight. His name is Mr. Fuller. And if he's in, would you come forward? Ladies and gentlemen, standing before you is our new fire chief, Russell Fuller. And before we begin, we'd like to counsel, could I get a motion for approval of hiring our fire chief, Mr. Fuller?
Second motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we accept Mr. Fuller. Russell Fuller is our fire chief of the town of Lewisburg. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Welcome, Chief Fuller. And as a result, I'm going to square you in. And ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Fuller comes to us well-qualified. He's a native of Franklin County with years of experience in our parish.
Yes, you can call him a parent.
You have the family members, you can come forward. How are you? Okay. Thank you for the honor of holding. She likes to hold the Bible. Okay. Assume this is your son.
He's my son.
Okay, all right. Hand him the Bible and repeat after me. I.
Russell Fuller.
As the fire chief of the town of Lewisburg, swear that I will support the Constitution.
As the fire chief of the town of Lewisburg, I swear I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of North Carolina.
The Constitution of the state of North Carolina.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially discharge the duties of the fire chief.
And impartially discharge the duties of a fire chief.
And I pledge to carry out.
I pledge to carry out.
The duties of the fire chief.
The duties of the fire chief.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And will honor and respect.
And will honor and respect.
Goals, purposes, and policies.
Goals, purposes, and policies.
Of the town of Lewisburg.
Of the town of Lewisburg.
And I pledge to promote.
I pledge to promote.
And protect.
And protect.
The best interest of the town of Lewisburg.
The best interest of the town of Lewisburg.
Through physical responsibility.
Through physical responsibility.
Honesty.
Honesty.
Integrity.
Integrity.
And lawyers.
And lawyers.
I will never allow personal feelings.
I will never allow personal feelings.
Nor danger to self.
Nor danger to self.
Deter me from my responsibilities.
Deter me from my responsibilities.
As fire chief.
As fire chief.
I will at all times respect.
I will at all times respect.
Property and rights of all men and women.
Properties and rights of all men and women.
The laws of my country.
The laws of my country.
And the members that I serve with.
And the members that I serve with.
I recognize the badge of my office.
I recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
As a symbol of a public faith and trust.
And I accept so long as I am true.
I accept so long as I am true.
To the ethics of the fire service.
To the ethics of the fire service.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
Required by my position.
Required by my position.
And I accept this self-imposed.
And I accept this self-imposed.
And self-enforced.
Self-enforced.
Obligation of my responsibility.
Obligations of my responsibility.
And make these promises so.
And make these promises so.
Solemnly.
Solemnly.
Freely.
Freely.
And upon my honor.
And upon my honor.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Item number six on the agenda tonight is, I'm sorry, number seven is public comment. This is the time, citizens, where you have three minutes to come forth and share any comments or concerns that you have with the council. I have under this there, first is Ken Ketterer. Mr. Ketterer, for the record, state your name and address, please.
106 John Street, Lewisburg, North Carolina. Who's speaking concerning number 13, adoption amendment for rezoning Franklin County Tax Parcel 1708 from historical overlay to low-density residential? The house in question, based on tax records, it looks like it's owned by Peters Rental Properties LLC, and a few months ago, they went ahead and started renovating the exterior of the house without getting any approvals from the Historic Development Commission. Then we got a notice that there was a meeting concerning the property, and the lady who represented the Peters Rental Properties LLC indicated that there'd be hardship. She had to take down the siding and bring it back to where it was. The house, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it and look through the rest of the neighborhood, but that's a one-on-one or one-of-one. There's houses similar, but nothing exactly like that. It is right on the edge of the historic district, and when the historic district was amended, the house is listed as not individually eligible under any criteria, but contributing to Lewisburg Historic District Boundary Increase. There's eight houses that were listed like that in this increase, and I'm afraid if we start granting companies that come in and buy a house and start renovating it in the historic district without getting any approvals, these next eight might be the next ones down the list saying, let's do this, let's do that, claim hardship. I think it's going to set a bad precedence to have people buy, or companies buy houses, do what they want, not follow regulations. I just wish that you all would consider not taking that a historic structure. I believe it's a valuable property adjacent to where I live, and I'd like to see it stay that way. Thank you for your time. Any questions? All righty, thank you all.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Dick Hertz? Mr. Hertz? Betsy Burnett Benning? Evening.
It's an appropriate time to talk about the rezoning of a parcel 1401.
Yes, this is public comment, ma'am. You can speak. First, Ms. Benning, let me ask you to give your name and address, please.
And I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Betsy Burnett Benning. My husband, Fleet Benning, and our family have lived in our home at the 401 South entrance to Lewisburg for over 35 years. That address is 1501 US 401 Highway South. Our home, the Jesse Taylor Harris House, also known as Wolf Pit, was built in 1849 and sits directly adjacent to the proposed development site that will be discussed later, I guess, tonight. We are deeply invested in preserving the integrity of the town of Lewisburg chartered in 1779, as well as our home and the environment. We have several serious concerns that we hope you will address before rezoning is determined. Highway 401 safety traffic, that's Highway 401 South, safety traffic. Likely a great concern to each of us is the safety of Highway 401, as individuals from this 90-home development would frequently enter and exit this often extremely busy section of the highway. Safety measures to account for the added congestion will surely be paramount by the town. Adequate buffering and privacy protection. We have agreed to the following with the two of the owners, and they have discussed it with the others. An undisturbed buffer of 25 feet from the rear of lots, one through 11. Also, there would be a fencing built down the property line between the two properties, a fencing eight feet tall, natural-treated lumber, and it would be maintained by the HOA organization within the development. That has been agreed upon. Also, in front of this long wooden natural fence against the woodlands will be a hedge planted by the developer, a hedge of wax myrtle, which is a native bird-friendly group of plantings all the way down the hedge, the fencing. And then I will be responsible just for watering if needed, et cetera. We also have requested that if there happens to be drilling of stone to make this development of 90 homes happen, we are a bit concerned about the 1849 home structure that we live in and the outbuildings on the property. So it is a concern to us. We're going to hopefully resolve that. For the preservation of our home's privacy and environmental integrity, these protections are imperative and should remain a firm requirement should you decide to change the zoning. Three, an environmental impact and water management topic. It is my understanding that there will be a flood of the existing stream. The tar, hammock, rules, that would be very important, and 50-foot buffer is one that is suggested. Or am I at three minutes already?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. You can bring that.
We are also interested in what chemicals to be used to clear the land, and with the drifting of chemicals onto our property, we do organic gardening, we have a pond, so that is a concern. And we are, of course, especially thankful for the Special Highway Overlay District SHOD, which has been in place for many years, and it was created specifically to preserve and protect the gateway of our town's historic charm and character, since it is the main corridor from our capital city. And we hope that the town continues to remember the specifications, even if you do have to change the zoning. But we have, we feel that we have agreed upon with these property owners several things that were very, that were very important to us. We also hope that they will not burn debris on the property, and that would be very disadvantageous to us if that happens, but I don't believe they will. They just said that they won't.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Benning. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Next, Sandra, Sandra Burnett?
I'm Sandra Burnett, and I'm actually the sister of Betsy, just in case she ran out of time. I'm at 4617 Nacogdoona Lane, Lake Forest, North Carolina, and I wanted to share with you that today we met with two of the owners, and then they talked to the others, and we've come up with an exhibit, and it's been signed and by both parties, and we'd like for that to be a part, and he's already agreed upon it, that this would be a part of this plot plan that they're going to share with you tonight. And I just wanted to thank you for your time, and it's great to be back in Lewisburg.
Thank you. Lucy Allen? Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. And on behalf of folks here, I would ask you again to consider getting a better sign system so that everybody can hear those who are speaking to you. I am speaking about the proposal for 25-foot easement between the new development and Wolf Pit. First, I'd like the representatives of the company here, I'd like to welcome you to, is anybody here from the company? Well, welcome to Lewisburg. We're delighted to have you feel like this is a good place to be. In that light, I would like to say that I looked up the information on the company, was very well impressed with it, particularly the fact that you are interested in environmental protection, and I feel like this is environmental protection. In this case, it's the protection of the front porch, the front yard, the front driveway into Lewisburg. And I hope that and feel that from what I've read about the part of, that this will be an attractive and addition to Lewisburg that we'll be very proud of. But at the same time, I think it's important that we be good neighbors with each other. And again, I'm hopeful that the company will consider that and know that perhaps 100-foot easement between this development and Wolf Pit would be more conducive to good neighbors, particularly since there'd be lots of light, lots of doors, lots of cars next door to a very welcoming sight when you come into Lewisburg. So again, welcome to your company, but I hope that there will be great consideration given to being a good neighbor at another part of the front door that's welcoming to Lewisburg. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Sandra Peters?
Hello, Sandra Peters. I'm the owner of 25 Williamson Street, number, item number 13. First of all, I wanted to say that we didn't just come in as a company and buy the property. Peters Rental Properties is an LLC that we created to hold the property until we can give it to our son. We bought it for our son who has special needs. He can't drive, and he'll need to be in a walkable community to be independent. So we bought it for him, and because he was only 17, we put in some tenants, and the council said you have to do it as an LLC if you have tenants. So he's still not quite independent yet, but we bought the house for him, which is why we started to renovate it on the outside. I can't charge more rent if it looks good. I didn't do it for the tenant. I did it because I want to take pride in this property. So I have the original tax record that we pulled when we were looking at it when it was for sale, and it shows zoned R1. So we had no way to know that it was any other than R1. We have, I have pictures of all the houses on the street that already have vinyl siding. There are five within steps of the house. I have the disclosure from the sellers where they checked that there were no covenants on item 32. They checked that there was no, are there any restrictions, property subject to governing documents which impose various mandatory covenants, conditions, or restrictions upon the lot or the unit? No, they checked. So we had no way of knowing. Had we known it was in the historic district, we certainly wouldn't have done, but I would have bought it. It's across the street from Napa Auto Parts, it's across the street from CVS. I had a 19 by 20 pole barn, it's aluminum on the property, and it was built in the 50s. It doesn't look historic, there's nothing historic about it. Had I known, I wouldn't have purchased it because, as you said, it was a nice walkable community for our son. We do have a tenant there now because he's still not quite ready to be independent. He's 19, he needs a couple more years. I have pictures of what it looked like before. It was quite a nice orb before, and it had asbestos siding on it. So when we called the aluminum company in North Carolina, a very well-known reputable company, they said the best thing is to encase the asbestos, because to have the asbestos removed, and I have a quote here, just to have the asbestos removed was over 14,000-something just to have the asbestos shingles removed. So they said, well, we can encase it in this insulation and then put vinyl over, and so then it's safe, you know, because once you disturb it, you can't disturb asbestos. So we proceeded to do that, and we were about a day away from finishing, and then we were going to put gutters on and make it look all nice. We got a stop work order, which we did stop. I have a picture of the sign at the corner of Williamson and Bickett where there's no historical landmark, you know, how they have the little brown things, there isn't one there. So again, we just didn't know. And not that ignorance is an excuse, but there are five other houses that have vinyl siding on the street. So it is the very end of that street, again, across the street from Napa Auto Parts. If we were to remove the siding, and I have If we were to remove the siding, and I have quotes, I'll hear from the companies. North Carolina, the Aluminum Company of North Carolina wants $11,000 to take off the siding that we've put on, that we've already paid 18,000 for. The asbestos removal is 14,750. The new materials for the shingles would be 10,270. And the new siding install, because of the asbestos looking shingles, they're very brittle. So it's going to come between 69 and 74,000 dollars to recite the house if we take the siding off and proceed as was proposed. And the house was only 115,000.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Peters. Thank you. Name Victoria S. I'm not able to read the last part of the name, but it says Victoria. Victoria S. that I have here. Is there anyone named Victoria? Sign the list. Rachel Dixon?
My name is Rachel Dixon, 11208 North Main Street. We are new to the community as of last year. My family moved here to be closer to my parents. I have a two-year-old, and I just wanted to throw this out there because Councilwoman Woods brought up last time that maybe we should bring the same enthusiasm to bringing something to the city for our kids as we were to keep in the courthouse in town. For keeping the courthouse in town, I'm also for bringing stuff to the kid, for the kids. Something that we had a lot of in Louisville where we moved from were splash parks. So I did a little research when I wasn't falling asleep after the last meeting, and they are significantly less expensive to build than a pool. They, you don't have to have anybody working there. All the splash parks I went to, nobody was ever there. So I'm just throwing it out there. I think the closest ones in Wade County, I did look up, they, the city themselves, I think, spent 65,000, and then the rest of it was a grant, and that cost them 350, which I know that we're not trying to spend a bunch of money right now. But I just wanted to throw it out there for when you're thinking about it in the future because it gets pretty hot here, and the kids love water, and it just seems like it was a really good idea that I have some of that there. So that's all. Thank you all so much. I love being a part of Lewisburg. I'm very proud. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. Okay. Item number eight is, you know, for all of you who didn't know, the month of March has a weekend that's called Girl Scouts Week. This is where we honor our Girl Scouts. And you know, they are the leaders of our future. Perhaps maybe one of these young ladies will probably be sitting in my seat. Either one of the council seats, maybe 15, 20 years from now. But to honor that, I have a proclamation for Girl Scout Week. Are there any more young ladies out there? Girl Scouts? I have a proclamation that I'm going to present to these young ladies. Can I ask your name? Kennedy and Emily. Kennedy and Emily represent our local Girl Scouts. And I'm going to read this proclamation to honor you during the month of March and Girl Scout Week. And it reads, "Whereas March 12th marks the 113th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, founded by Juliette Garden, Juliette Garden Loeb in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas throughout the distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest idea of courage, confidence, character. And whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experiment, girls gain knowledge, develop skills, and will serve them a lifetime so that they may contribute to their community. Whereas Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them today in science, technology, engineering, math, and the arts, as well as other fields that can explain their horizon. And in this moment of suffering in our nation, Girl Scouts commits to taking action to support all girls, their families, and their communities. Whereas our community represents every race, ethnicity, income level, sexual orientation, ability, and religion, reflects a spectrum of gender identity, and connects across geographic locations. By focusing our attention on community members who are farthest from racial, racial, economic, and social justice, Girl Scouts can be an instrument of change, promoting equitable outcomes for all. We wholly commit to taking action to grow as an anti-racist and anti-oppressive organization so that through Girl Scouts, our members are affirmed as they strive to make our community and world better. Now, therefore, I, Christopher Neill, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby applaud the commitment to Girl Scouting as made to support the life and leadership development of girls and proudly proclaim this week of March 9th through the 15th, 2025, Girl Scout Week in the town of Lewisburg, North Carolina." Thank you. Thank you. There was one other young lady, outstanding Girl Scout. I don't think she's here tonight. Ava Joy Noah. It's from Youngsway. However, I've noticed that she has risen to the highest rank in Girl Scouting as Eagle Scout. And she's the fourth female to reach that goal. And I just want to just recognize her and congratulate her in her absence for the achievement that she's done. So they're striving, striving to make a difference in our community. So given that, I want to honor them. Item number nine. See, if you haven't noticed, tonight we're celebrating young people. Item number eight here is a presentation by the Lewisburg Elementary School. They have a Box City presentation that they would like to show us. And the kids who have worked on this project, I understand, have spent a lot of time, and they have taken an interest in the town of Lewisburg and also how government works. And for that reason, they have put together this little Box City that you see to your right there. And I hope someone here can, Ms. Woods explained the, that project, and Mr. Sadoway, they worked in conjunction of that.
Item number one. I've been working with Ms. Woods' fifth grade class here with wonderful young men and women in our community to create a project called Box City, which incorporates elements of planning and zoning and how municipality works. The students have been engaged. They've had thoughtful contributions to the project. And I'm just really happy that they've taken an interest in how our town works and how towns in general works. It's an amazing accomplishment that they've done, and I'd like first to all give them a hand clap. The project will oversee them on the side table, incorporating elements of planning such as residential zoning, commercial zoning, agricultural zoning. And to tie it all together, we're going to assume... She wants to be in part of it. We're going to assume roles in the town, such as a mayor, town council, developers, citizens, to give the children a chance to experience these projects and how they really work. Please, before you leave tonight, come check them out. They're great. They want to bring them up. Please, students, if you're here, please come on up so you can, I'd love for you to show them. Let's give them one more hand clap. As I said, we had a discussion, and we talked about planning and zoning and aspects to plan the city. So the first step was planning. We designed a road network, and we talked about where different things go in the city. We implemented it by creating the boxes and actually drawing the roads onto a map for a big group project. What you see here tonight, the students have done their own individual projects, which they worked hard on, and they got graded on for class. And as I said, this is just a wonderful way to incorporate what we do here in the city with our future leaders, as the mayor said. So please, again, come and check them out when the, when the presentation is over. And I'd like for each student to say their name and kind of just a brief description of your project, okay? All right, you can go first.
Could I ask you to speak louder so we can?
Oh, it's translated.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or Lisa, you can just say her name before, say it out loud. Ashley, right? Last name?
Ashley incorporated in her project, she incorporated agriculture, and she incorporated light fixtures. Hers actually light up. She had streetlights. She created streetlights, stoplights in her project. She had...
I'm doing residential. I made a school, a hostel, a clean shop, and an apartment here. I put a parking lot, a park, and a soccer field. And also made this a room to feel that little kids can just go in.
I have a store, a parking lot, a home, a dealership, a gas station, hospital, and apartments, and tents, and the beach.
I have a police office, a hospital, a park, a wall, and mine is commercial.
I need a job site, a school, and a hotel.
I have apartments right here, a bus stop, a hospital, fountain right here, and a school, and a parking lot, a basketball court, cars, and a food court.
I have a school, technology store, and a hospital. I also have a zoo lion, a farm, a row, and a pond, and a bridge, cars, and a stop, a stop sign, and a speed limit, and I also have wine.
It's really wonderful to see future Americans, these young people, leaders. And they're showing that now. They're showing the introduction of science, engineering, technology, and math illustrated in all of it. So congratulations, young people. Continue to ask your parents to come to the town meet. And, you know, perhaps maybe as time goes on, you can have a mock town council where you can play at, become mayor for a day or an hour, become council for an hour or a day. Thank you.
I am so proud of you all. These are my babies.
Good job, Jessica. And thank you, Mr. Sadoway. Thank you for taking the time.
Item number 10, report from our Economic Development Committee. Mr. Hinton, Mr. Allen?
Thank you. As young as they are, but I think those citizens enthuse that. I'm here to speak on two of the recommendations made by the Economic Development Committee, which I will never... One you have seen before, which is our recommendation that you pursue a planned greenway system on the south bank of the Tar River, east of the Main Street Bridge, and on the north side of the Tar River, west of the Main Street Bridge. This, this, this project would be a phased project. It would take multiple times to do it, but you have to start. In order to start, you need to have a feasibility study and a detailed planned program. That requires a consultant who's knowledgeable in those areas and would help write that, that plan. In order to get the state participation, which would include the Great Trails Fund Program and the North Carolina Land and Water Fund, they provide funding for good programs, well-written, submitted by municipalities, for payment of the consultants, to develop partial payments to the consultants, for the planning of the... for the planning of the, an actual layout of the, of the greenway system for the actual construction of the greenway system. And we suggest that you provide in your budget for the period beginning July 1st of 25, a provision to hire this consultant and proceed forward with the feasibility study and planning program. You shouldn't delay. We're gonna need to do this. It's gonna take two or three years to get the program in place and, and construction start. It's important to include it in your budget, get the, get the feasibility study and the planning done. Approve the plan and submit it for partial reimbursement so you can proceed along. Obviously, you can do it if, with your own money, but why not take advantage of the funds provided by the state? Secondly, we recommend that you consider hiring an individual who is a grant writer, has the attributes to coordinate activities in the town, help with the grant writing that would be in, included in the Main Street Rural Development Program. This person has to be in place. In order to get grants from the Main Street Rural Development Program, you have to be able to say to the, to the programs, we will allocate 10 hours a week or 20 hours a week to this program and the requirements that you set forth for us to develop the information to proceed. We don't, and as the economic development committee, we don't see that you have that person in place now and would encourage you to include that person in your budget for the next, this year. All of these things are important. The committee sees recommending to you in the future that you consider more activities downtown and in other areas of the town, Riverbend Park. That you, that the various businesses on the, on the boulevard and in town, they need assistance. This person could interview these, these companies and determine what assistance they might need and what the, what the town could provide them or find a grant and write that grant to help people, the businesses move forward. I'll say this again. I'm in, I'm enthusiastic about the town. I want to see the town step forward with short-term planning, long-term planning, that we have an objective and take advantage of all the activity that we're seeing coming our way. And currently here, we have two or three housing developments coming. These people are gonna need activities. They need healthy activities, a greenway system. Greenway systems have shown in the past that they attract people from outside of town, uh, plus people who live in town into the downtown areas and businesses develop around them. We encourage you to truly consider these two budget items in your planning for next year. The greenway system planning, you can make applications. You've already made one for a portion of a greenway system. Have to be submitted in certain periods of time and you get the results three or four months later. So there is a timing issue. Can't ignore it. If you ignore it, we move forward another year with no results. It is our position that you should consider these two items in the budget.
Item number 11, resolution designating finance officer and appointing deputy finance officer. Mr. Medling.
Mayor Town Council, thank you. Uh, in front of you tonight, uh, instead of doing two separate resolutions, uh, I confirm that this was eligible to be done, uh, by the LGC. Uh, technically, as you are aware, the town administrator hires the finance officer. However, we need that designation that they are the, uh, finance officer for the town and that, that is according to the general statute 15924, which states that local governments and public authorities shall designate a finance officer who is responsible for providing financial safeguards. But also, uh, general, North Carolina general statute 159 dash 28, 28 says that the town council has the right to designate other staff as deputy finance officers to sign checks and execute documents in the absence of the finance officer. As you are aware, I was serving as that before, uh, I became the interim and now I'm back requesting that I become the deputy. Uh, so in front of you tonight, I have a resolution, uh, basically asking that you recognize, uh, Ms. Jennifer Morgan as the new appointed or designated finance, uh, officer for the town of Lewisburg and that I would become the deputy, appointed deputy finance officer for the town of Lewisburg and, um, could move financial documents forward in her absence. And so I'm just asking for a motion to adopt and approve this resolution. And before you, if you don't have any questions, uh, for many of you that have not met, Ms. Jennifer Morgan is here and she will, once you approve this resolution, she'll come forward and take her oath. But, uh, I just wanted to let you know that she's on board and we're working diligently to accomplish quite a bit of information, so.
All right, any questions for, uh, Sean as relates to this? From the council? If not, could I get a motion to, uh, to approve this resolution, which is, uh, item number 10 in your packet there? It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the resolution designating Jennifer Morgan as finance director as hired by the town administrator and appointing Sean Medling, town administrator, deputy finance officer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Ms. Morgan, could I ask you to come forward? We're moving forward. Swearing in, new employees, uh, hoping to take the town forward. And these people who fill that room contribute very heavily, positive value in helping us move the town to Lewisburg forward. And, uh. All right, so we just oath for you, Ms. Morgan and gentlemen by nature. Aye, to your name.
Aye, Jennifer Morgan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as finance officer.
The duties of my office as finance officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 13, uh, the adoption of, of the amendment to, to zone map, rezone Franklin County tax ID parcel 017008 from historic overlay to low-density residential. Mr. Sadoway.
Thank you, Mayor. We've heard a bit about this case already tonight, this evening. There was a property in the historic district that was noticed, uh, that repairs were being made at the property. Staff issued a stop work order. We worked with the property owner to come up with a resolution and through the Historic Preservation Commission, we decided that this boundary amendment may be the best choice due to the fact that the property would be left dilapidated indefinitely, um, through the hardship that the property owners claiming. Also due to the fact that it is behind a commercial auto store. The property is about 100 feet away from Metro thoroughfare, Victor Boulevard and, um, but evaluation and looking through the state historic preservation files, uh, it was determined through the state that the state has four criteria that it determines historic properties. Criteria A deals with a significant event or pattern of events. Nothing significant has happened at the, at the property. Criteria B, individuals whose activities demonstratably important with the local state or national context. That was not the case for the property. Uh, criteria C, uh, distinctive characteristics of a type, period or method of construction represent the work of a master, possess high artistic values or represent a significant or distinguishable, distinguishable entity. Um, that was not the case with the property. And the last criteria D is that it is unlikely that an additional study of this property viewed in unretrieved data cannot discoverable through informed interviews, building technology and document sources. Therefore, the Carter House is not recommended eligible for national recognition of historic property under that criteria. Um, the process goes where, um, I wrote the staff report, we went to the planning boards. I sent the report to the state historic preservation office and they have 30 days to respond. We waited about 45 days and there was no response, which is their mechanism for saying that we want our hands out of it and they leave it up to the town and the town to decide. And in our ordinance, it states that we can move forward with the decision after that 30-day period. Uh, so cases before you tonight, it is staff recommendation that we amend the district, district boundary. It does follow the same process as a rezoning, but this is not a rezoning. It would be amending the district. Uh, the graphic behind you will show the current district is in red and the proposed district amendment would bring the light blue line in which it would not change the district except to exclude the one property, parcel number 017008.
Any questions for Mr. Sadoway from the council?
Sir, so this has been a problem in the past with other, um, homes within the district in which I understand that there is a board that meets regarding changes to any property that is in the historic district. Um, but we have seen other premises that have started work and then.
And we issue stop work.
And then we issue the stop work and a resolution is made. But how is it that we sit here and justify that within the historic district, there are other houses with siding? There's people with aluminum gridges or sheds on their historic property. Why is it that, are people that have the vinyl windows put into their historic homes? How is it that we can say it's okay for some, but not for others? How do we justify that and make it fair?
That is usually a case of it happened before the rules were in place, before the regulations were in place for the vinyl. The, the only real regulations that stringent from the Historic Preservation Commission is no vinyl. I personally don't know when that rule was initiated, but I'm, I'm assuming that the only way that they, those other properties were allowed to have vinyl or any kind of vinyl siding windows was, it was because it was done before the regulation was put in place. Um, as far as enforcement, since I can speak to, since I've been here, um, any case of enforcement we've dealt with and we do not allow vinyl. This, as I said, was because of other reasons, uh, additional reasons is why. We, we thought that it would be okay to amend the district boundary to exclude this one.
So do you have a suggestion on what we can do to prevent an instance like this wherein the homeowner or property, it was not told or spoken to, to them that it was in the district? How are people supposed to know that? Because if you wait till when we go to town hall to turn all the power, it's already mine. Um, that's a little too late. So do you have a recommendation on what other people do or communities that we can let people know you are buying a home and it's gonna fall within these regulations?
I think one thing for sure is we need to put aside. That's, that's probably first thing, to let them know that this is a historic district area because there are, um, other signage around the historic district. I believe that the second step would be probably dealing with real estate agents. Making real estate agents aware that these properties are historic and the Historic Preservation Commission does govern the exterior of those properties.
That was my thoughts that she mentioned. There was a document from the seller saying there were no, uh, covenants when that wasn't the case.
Right.
So that's really on the seller or their agents.
Right.
And, um, Holt's letter also says that this are the district increase in 2018. So that's seven years ago. I didn't know it had been added until this happened. So I can see how we got here, but definitely if we could be more proactive.
Absolutely.
I think most other folks like myself who live in the middle of the historic district are very well aware of our obligations.
Right.
I don't think, I think this is a unique situation. This house doesn't look like it belongs in the historic district. It's very much on the very edge. It's like you say, it's right up against commercial properties. Uh, and it was dilapidated and I think what they have done has made the house look far better. It may not be, you know, to our standards for the historic district, but it is certainly an improvement over what the house was. And it's really, you know, I don't think most people who would come up with a street, we even think it's in the historic.
Right. That was staff thoughts and, uh, historic preservation thoughts.
So I, I think it's, uh, I think what we have, I was part of the movement to get the historic district in the first place. The woman who did the study, get our historic district, stayed at my house while she did the study. I'm a very strong supporter of the historic district, but I also think we have to use common sense. I just visited my daughter, who's the director of the library system for this town, for the county. And she had to put up with a window that faced, didn't face any street, faced the back, that we insisted that they put in a wood window. County couldn't, couldn't get it into their budget, so they had it boarded up with a piece of plywood. Now, why are we making a big issue out of something that nobody can see? All right. I think we gotta use common sense. Your, one of your predecessors was pretty much a numb for his lack of it. And I think you've got a whole lot better head on your shoulders. So I strongly support that we move forward with this amendment and I make the motion that we do so.
Terry, do you think there's something that the tax office can annotate? Is there, I wonder if there's something that they can also put down if people would look it up through the tax office? Maybe there's something like a special, um, I, I don't know if they have such, but, you know.
All right, it's been moved. Could I get a second?
Second motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt an amendment to the zoning map to rezone Franklin County tax parcel ID 017008 from historic overlay to low-density residential. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 14, adoption of amendment to zone, uh, the map to rezone Franklin County tax parcel 033007 from a special highway overlay district shod to a planned development. Uh, Mr. Sadoway. Mr. Sattalike.
Yes, any member of the council with a larger map of sidecar needs to be. This request for a rezoning was proposed by the Now Company. They have a representative here tonight. Terravita is a mixed-use family community that is proposed on 401. It would be single-family and townhomes. Their range is from two-hundred-and-eighty thousand to four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. They propose a total of ninety-four homes with sixty being townhomes around sixty-sixty-three and the rest would be single-family homes. I was really glad to hear that the property owner, the adjacent property owner and Now Company had reached some sort of agreement about the perimeter buffer. That was a major concern with it being an AR use next to a PDD or PDR, which this would be a planned development residential. But, you know, like I said, I was really glad that they reached that agreement. The gateway, it is designated as the gateway district in our comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does call for mixed-use development. Shaw does have an extra layer of zoning regulation, but this, in our comprehensive plan, this area is designated as the area to bring mixed-use development and mixed-use commercial. So the case before you tonight, as you can see in your packets, there, they have a narrative here that encompasses the plans for signage, for landscaping, construction. They will have covenants with the neighborhood. They will create an HOA that governs. The only piece in the covenants that will not be allowed is solar panels. We do not currently allow solar panels on residential land. Well, we have had a bit of difficulty with, I guess, the companies coming into town and initiating solar projects. We have created a threshold for solar projects, so we really would like to see commercial solar instead of residential solar because sometimes the solar panels will. We have learned that the output, when it puts power back onto the system, it can trip the system and shut off power for a wide range of homes. So it could adversely affect neighborhoods potentially. And it was instituted last year is that we have a threshold, which is fifty KW, which pretty much excludes anything residential.
That can be dealt with?
Oh, yeah, that can be amended.
No, but I mean, you're saying the tripping of the, what you're saying is power coming from solar panel would trip some of the breakers in our system.
Correct.
That can't be corrected?
I can't speak to that technically. I don't know. That's the way it was explained to me and that's, that's the ordinance that was put into place, okay? Last, I believe it was early last year. Yes, sir.
Might that be a topic that is considered on a different day? It is interesting. It sounds like conversations need to happen, but we're getting off on a tangent.
Yes.
I've got a question before he says it. When are they hoping to start this project if this is all worked out?
From my understanding, it would be probably this winter.
My next question is, does the Green Hill Lift Station for the sewer tie into this project?
It would.
Okay. So before we go and get this down the road, it's my understanding we don't have funding to fix that problem. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct, yes, sir.
So why are we going to approve this when we can't deliver on it?
This would be just the rezoning. This would not be the development approval. So essentially, they're just rezoning the parcel right now and they would still have to go through development approvals to get the approvals to start construction.
So that's not going to create a problem for us?
It should not, no, sir, because we wouldn't give the development approval until we had worked out something with the lift station. So kind of like Lewisburg Falls, it got rezoned, but they never really started construction. It still has that same zoning on the parcel, but they don't have any development approval yet, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure it didn't put us in a bad position.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We'd be thankful.
It's a valid concern.
And also, we're going back for funding. I think it's April fifth, somewhere around there, that we'll submit another application for that project to get funding for that.
I have two concerns. First is the entrance. That's going to be a very dangerous intersection.
That was one of the major concerns as well. I talked with the developer. There's some concern through, I was the first one to raise this concern. First of all, with the increase with 401 potentially in the future and then with the traffic and the speed of cars coming over that hill at fifty-five miles an hour and then turning into the neighborhood.
I think we need to start talking to the DOT to move the forty-five down that way.
That's what I was going to say.
I don't think we should allow any cross-tre.
Oh, no, no, no.
They're strictly right turn.
Right in, right out. That's what they, that's what they proposed is right in, right out. And anything beyond that, DOT makes that determination.
Maybe consulted anyways.
Yeah, right, absolutely. DOT would be consulted before anything was ever put on the board. And I'm sure if whatever is necessary, DOT will make them.
I don't see any greenways.
Sorry?
I don't see any greenways in this plan.
Any greenways in this plan? Yeah, they're, they have open space planned proposed here.
That's important, but also I think any development like this going forward ought to have greenways, possibly as an alternative to sidewalks. I think, I guess these gray lines are sidewalks.
In, within the neighborhood? I'm sorry?
I don't know.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
I think they ought to get some strong consideration doing greenways as an alternative. You know, I have discussed that in the past, as being more environmentally friendly and possibly even less expensive, particularly if you do natural surfaces. You know, we've just been talking about with the EDC, you know, developing a greenway system. I think all these new developments, I mean, what we were talking about, the EDC is tying the greenway coming down the Tar River with the Green Hill project. You know, we shouldn't be looking at a way of tying this. It's walkable within the neighborhood, but it's not any way for people to walk to Walmart, which is just across the street, or to get to Bicket Boulevard and to the shopping on Bicket Boulevard.
Very true. That's something that y'all still can't.
Right.
Or for developers.
No, I'm very happy to see that they're talking about townhouses. We desperately need that. We also need apartments, but I guess it probably wouldn't fit in this plan, but.
Yeah, probably not. I think from the developer's standpoint, I think the townhomes are probably a more desirable product than apartments.
All right, that's my issues.
Any other questions from the council?
What you're saying, basically, all we're doing is removing the zone. So they're going to have to come back to this.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, if no other questions, can I get a motion to adopt? It's been moved in property, well, here's second. Okay, it's moved in property second that we adopt an amendment for the zoning map to rezone Franklin County Tax Parcel 033007 from special highway overlay district to planned development. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay. Item number sixteen on the agenda, administrative report. Mr. Madlin.
See at the bottom.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sixteen?
Sixteen. Sixteen. Right. Sorry. Item number, there's item number fifteen. The resolution for appointment of town boards and commissioners. Mr. Sattalike.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council. The town posted one vacancy for the historic commission. Town clerk, Mrs. Perry, received two applications. Attached is a summary provided by each applicant for the council. And we would like the council action to be the approval of the resolution to appoint Mrs. Ray Dixon.
Any questions from the council? Sattalike starting that. Tonight, can I get a motion to approve? It's been moved in property second that we approve a resolution to appoint Ms. Rachel Dixon to the Board of Commissions. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The pass. Thank you, sir. Yeah.
Oh, now we're to my report, number sixteen.
Okay.
Have we got off on that?
Okay. Now, item number sixteen, now the administrative report. Shaw?
Mayor, Town Council, thank you. Town staff has worked, is working to finalize RFQs for the Brownsville Cleanup Grant. If you'll recall, this grant is related to some cleanup over on West River Road. The grant came in for five-hundred thousand, so we're now working to get finalized RFQs for that. The town received a fifty-fifty loan principal forgiveness related to a sewer rehabilitation project. The project came to a cost of about three million. One and a half of that would be forgiven and the remaining one and a half would be a low-interest loan, roughly a twenty-year loan. This would work towards some sewer replacement enhancements for terracotta piping at West River Road around the College Street area on Main Street and then some of the area at fifty-six and Bicket. There's some areas over there. We actually were seeking funding for that for several years. We were actually funded. You usually don't get funding unless the state deems that we have maybe a need to do this. Part of that funding that we had sought for was the Green Hill Lift Station and they do a lot of things by point system. We did not receive funding. We lost by one point, so we're submitting, we're updating into what we need to do to try to see if we can't get additional points for that. So we have that. In the current budget, we approve trash containers for every resident and those will start being delivered May the nineteenth. Just continue to look through your monthly newsletter and you'll see that. As you are aware, I have a weekly update with LGC and audit. We're currently working on the audit to get that to you as a draft and we're expecting that in the month of March. I actually reached out to the audit firm today and I did not get a response from them to give me if they had an additional up-to-date that they could give me for that. So that is where we're sort of working with the audit and I'm sort of waiting on them to give us this. They're not asking for information, assuming that they're working on writing the report at this point for us. We've now got Jennifer Morgan on board and she is working diligently to get us up-to-date on our day-to-day operations and I'm still working on the audit information so we can at least get this knocked out. So we have that and the LGC is aware of this. And I don't know that many of you would know, but LGC has actually received an announcement for retirement. So now they are now working through some issues. So I don't know, you know, how quickly our meetings will continue, once a week or twice a week, twice, twice a month. I'm not sure exactly how that'll work because they are having some, Debbie Tomasco who came is now retiring at effective the end of this month. So we're looking to work with that and keep you updated on what's going on with that. I'll also give an accrual update. I know that had been a question. I have provided staff, the HR staff, with the updated numbers for our fire and I'm now working on police safety for that. So we're working through and they should see those on their next pay stub. So that's where we are. Any questions or concerns, please let me know. Also, I will note that this weekend, our one-on-one, LGC did say they're, they're still receiving calls from Lewisburg citizens. I'm not for sure who they are, but please, whoever you are, the town hall is open and we're happy to assist you in any way we can. We'll give you whatever information you need, so.
Where are we on the Depot Hill rank?
So once we get our audit, we can move forward with doing our biz for Depot Hill.
We're ready to go for the biz.
Yes, sir. We're ready.
And I'd like to emphasize as well, calls to the, to the Raleigh office, they will refer you back to the town. If you, if you really want any questions answered, I strongly suggest, council, share with the citizens who may be referring questions to you, refer back to them to come to town hall rather than going to Raleigh, calling them. You can find the same answers in town hall because we work with them just about on a weekly basis. So if you want answers, come to town hall. That's where the answers are. So I would just suggest to the council, if citizens are approaching you, just simply refer them to town hall.
Mr. Madlin, I have a question. I know that we're getting ready to go into budget season. One of the things that we could probably benefit from in the budget is the utility rate study. Will we have all that back before budget?
I highly doubt it. I think Lee and I worked on that. They need, I think, two or three months, is that correct, Lee? To get every, all the information and they haven't been provided all the information.
And then I took a walk around Joyner Park, both parks today. There's a lot of swings and things like that that are missing. Is that something that we're working on?
Already, already in progress.
That's awesome. And then any idea when we might be seeing financials?
Jennifer's been here two weeks and we're working hard, so as soon as we get them, we'll get them to you.
And then one of my other things is the North Main Street Park dedication. Any ideas if we'll be dedicating that park anytime soon?
We will work on getting that accomplished.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, the mayor's report. I have only one report to report to you this evening. I attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new office for advanced health care. They are now in a much more larger office over on Sanderwood there beside the Duke Healthcare and they are providing additional services as well, dental services and some mental services as well. So they were very pleased with the new office and I was very glad to be a part of that, that new office celebration with them. So we did that and, and they are looking forward to providing additional services to the, to the citizens of Lewisburg and the surrounding area. Next item report, police report. She?
Thank you, Mr. Madlin. Counsel, I just want to recognize a couple officers who aren't here tonight, but Officer Jeremy Horn completed K-9 training with the first of two police K-9s that the town will have. So you'll see K-9 trace riding around in a SUV. And Sergeant Andy Castaneda completed the FBI LEDA Supervisor Leadership Institute. I know you've probably heard me talk about that. We've had a couple of recent graduates as well. But it's a trilogy of leadership training taught by law enforcement officials from all over the country and hopefully we can get him as well as the other supervisors in the police department through these trainings. For residents in the Dogwood-Tankwood area of town, I know parking from DMV has been a bit of an issue and we had barricades up. I saw those throughout pages of Franklin Times. They have been taken up and replaced with no parking signs on the side of the daycare there. So hopefully that will relieve some congestion and safety concerns in that area.
The fire report, you can read that report that's in, that's included in your package there.
Derek, I would like to say something about the fire report. I'd like to personally thank Captain Chase Womack for the funny job he's done as the fire chief and I have tickled pink to see that he's staying on. I'd like to give him a round of applause.
We begin with Councilman Clancy.
I want to thank everyone for being here.
Councilwoman Baker?
I would like to thank you for coming.
I don't think it's a show we've been here quite a while as it is.
Councilwoman Wright?
I too, just like to thank everyone for coming and see you again next month if not before.
Miss Stein?
Thanks. The town has extended our leaf season pickup, so there's two dates. It's on the town pages. I believe it's in the newsletter so that you don't have to bag. There's two weeks, one in March and one in April. You must contact the town to arrange pickup. They're not just going to be driving around looking for it. So that's something new that is a wonderful thing. If you have things out at the cemetery that need to be picked up for winter decorations and whatnot, please pick those up before mowing starts. And something I've noticed, it happens often, not through any fault, but when your power goes out, please contact the town. I had somebody call me, they had a power outage, they assumed everybody around them was out, no one around them was out, and they sat for hours waiting for their power to come back on, and no one knew about it. So please, when in doubt, always contact the town. And I would like to say welcome to the new staff. Thanks for all you do.
Councilwoman Woods?
I would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, especially my students. Most of them are gone, but I do want to thank them for coming out. They did an awesome, awesome job. Thank you to Mrs. Satterwhite, who brought the idea to my classroom. They are our future. These are the kids that we should be investing in. They are our future leaders, our future architects, our future doctors, lawyers, our future mayors, and we need to invest in them, show our support to them. They did an awesome job. It took a lot to get up in front of you all in faces that they've never seen before, and I would want to say they did an excellent job. So thank you to my students. Continue to encourage, encourage the young people. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Councilman Stowe?
Terry Satterwhite, nine, last week met with the Triangle Trail Specialist Parks and Recreation Department, and we discussed with him some ways to move forward with our greenway program. And he also reviewed the proposal we have in with the Great Trails State. He thinks we have an excellent chance of getting that approved, which would be a planning grant that's planned for a trail going from Depot Hill out to Joyner Park, which would eventually be able to join with what the EDC was talking about, the trail down along the river. But, so we are working very diligently on trying to develop a greenway system for Lewisburg.
Okay. No other comments? Can I get a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and property second that we adjourned. It's a nice meeting. All in favor? All opposed? And thank you, citizens.